I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. So the May 29 regular session of the school committee is now in order. All members of the school committee are present. And I will ask for any good news. I have to announce that we are being recorded by WCTV. And Jamie Wickson is making an audio recording as well. Oh, and we're standing for the pledge. How do I know?
What did you do without April?
I know, right?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hope you can bear up under rookies. Okay, now, we will take good news. Does anybody have any good news that they would like to share?
I was just there, Joyce.
So much pressure.
I have some good news, but I'll defer to the superintendent.
I just wanted to say that on Thursday, a week from today, Thursday morning at 8:00 is the senior breakfast. And of course, school committee is invited. So please, if you can make it, attend.
Any other good news? Yes.
Melissa, you have to come up.
Excuse me? Yes, you have to come up. Yes.
Is it on?
Is the green light on?
Can you hear me? Yes, it's on. So I just wanted to let you guys know that Michael Clemmons from the high school has qualified for states for Special Olympics for our track and field team. So he's going to be traveling there next week, and we're super excited about that.
Actually, Melissa, it was yesterday.
Oh, it happened yesterday.
It was yesterday, yes. And Michael and several others were there. And I didn't say anything because I don't want people to get sick of listening to me talking about it.
No, and they had asked me to, they had asked me about how, like, how we're going to get him there. So like, I had had it in my mind last week, and I didn't even think that it was true.
Yeah, no, time, these weeks just all go together, I know.
Super proud, though.
Yeah, it was a really great day. He did great. They all, yeah, there were several athletes that qualified, and they moved up to Division to Division One. So it was, it was, yeah.
Kudos to Michael and also to his coach, Megan Cash.
Yes, they did a great job.
Yes, they did.
So that's a great segue. I think I can say this. Mr. Palladino was pretty sure it was true. He can't remember the last time every single sport in the spring session qualified for the MIAA playoffs. So kudos to Mr. Palladino, Mr. Rodriguez, and all the coaches involved.
And the kids.
Yes.
They're the ones that qualified.
Absolutely. Okay, moving right along. Before we start public participation, and thank you for being here, I love passion, and I know you're all passionate. We will limit the remarks to two minutes. And my official timekeeper will give you a 20-second caution when you're approaching your two minutes. So would anybody like to address the school committee? Please, come up.
My name is Michelle Houghton. I am a sub-separate teacher at Wareham Elementary School, and I am going to read a letter from a parent. Dear Wareham School Committee members, paraprofessionals, and community members, by way of introduction, my name is Alicia, and I am a Wareham resident, elementary school parent, active community member, and finance professional. However, above all else, I'm a most proud parent of an amazing child who has substantially separate special education student profile. It's hard to put into words how proud I am of my child. He is truly awesome. I will do my best to hopefully provide some real insights into his education experience, but for privacy reasons, I will not name my child nor his direct educators. I'm going to move along. My child is a sensory-seeking, ultimate picky eater. I love him dearly, but if he could try a chicken nugget, or a slice of pizza, or mac and cheese, our daily lives would be a whole lot easier. However, this is not quite the case. We are going to highlight some things, some stories, which I will call Dinosaurs May Not Be Extinct: Adventures to the Great Outdoors, The Backpack Chronicles, and Party Like It's Your Birthday. Dinosaurs like to go on adventures in the great outdoors, which brings me to an example of how paraprofessionals are non-negotiable in my child's school day. My child is a happy, flappy little guy, but he's also a secret wanderer. I am talking top secret, barely makes a peep wanderer. It's amazing to watch him explore his environment. He has zero safety awareness. 99.9% of the time, he's a pretty chill child, but it's that slight chance that keeps everyone on their toes. So one day, this kiddo went on an adventure on the school grounds.
20 seconds.
Like outdoors. Yep, that kind of adventure. Do you want to know who found him? The only person he would go to safely was a paraprofessional. This person was familiar to him. They knew how to communicate at his level. They understood what it means to be a child who wanders, or bolts, or has limited communication and no safety awareness. Another situation was when-
That is 10 minutes, but I think the parent, excuse me, two minutes. And I think the parent has very effectively communicated her love of her son as well as her paraprofessional.
Yeah, I'm very disappointed in this. Sorry to say, that was not two minutes.
Would anybody else like to address the committee?
My name is Maria Galimo. I'm a para at Wareham Elementary School. I currently work in the, we call it the lower level, it's pre-K. But this is not about that. I'd like to tell you a story about a little boy who was about 18 months old. He was progressing nicely, his mom thought. He started to slow down in development. By the time he was two, he wasn't talking anymore. Eating became a minimum, and most basic functions were a huge challenge. He was a healthy child, very muscular, trying to brush his teeth, comb his hair, wash him, trying to cut his hair, anything. He was like anaconda on steroids. You could not hang on to him. His mom was terrified. She could see something was terribly wrong. Doctors suggested testing him for ASD during the pandemic. This was, so it took a year to do the testing. During that time, it was a nightmare. He finally got a diagnosis, and it was ASD. At least now, mom knew what was wrong, but still knew nothing about autism, or what to do, or how to deal with it. He was, he's now, he was now three, and she knew that he needed to go to school. Pandemic made that difficult. Finally, there was an option for him to go to DUCAS and be in a classroom that was still there. Still terrified, mom thought she'd go for it. She needed help. After talking to the head of pre-K, they made an appointment. He went in with mom and grandma. They were met by a woman named Wendy Owens, who asked if she could take Carter by herself. He was friendly, complied easily. Mom and grandma were beside themselves. Then he was gone. Upon his return, a question was brought forth by Wendy, who asked, "Do you know that he knows what a hexagon is?"
20 seconds.
She prevented the fact that he knew all his letters, numbers, shapes, and lots of other stuff. She explained Carter was very smart, that he had gathered all the information from his tablet and educational television that they were told about. The trick was to bring back the information locked away. Mom and grandma were in tears. I'm grandma. So this is a family that's close to me.
That's two minutes.
It's two minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Can I have another time? This is important.
I didn't allow your prior speaker more time, so unfortunately, Maria, I can't, in fairness.
Okay. Is there any time that we can address these and get these out? These are very important points that we need to bring out for the children. We're talking about the children. You're a school committee. You are here and have jobs, not jobs, but you are here doing what you do for the children in the community.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate what you had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just make a suggestion? Jeff, could I make a suggestion that any of these could be emailed to us?
Okay.
You know, if you have it printed out and-
I do.
Please email it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Marilyn Morley. I'm a paraprofessional at Wareham Elementary School. It's really disappointing, guys. There's not, it's not a full house. It's not like last time. 15 minutes, we could have probably gotten through it. But I'm going to read this for a parent. It says, "My name is Jennifer Aikens, and I'm the proud mother of a six-year-old boy named Logan who attends Wareham Elementary School. Logan's an incredibly loving, silly, adventurous, and bright child who warms any room that he goes into. He's also autistic and minimally verbal and relies on an AAC device, which is a device that helps him talk with a computer in his classroom. And he requires consistent thoughtful support to be successful and safe in the building. That support comes from his paraprofessionals, Ms. Toria and Ms. Jada, because they know Logan and they understand his sensory-seeking behaviors, his gluten allergy, and his unique communication style. They know that he may suddenly bolt and might not often respond if his name's called. Yet, every single day, they show up and meet these challenges with a calm, patient, unwavering attentiveness. And trusting your special needs child to someone else is never easy. There are very few people I trust Logan with, but I trust Ms. Toria and Jada completely. The bond they've built with him is something I could only hope for as a parent. Because of them, I can send my son to school every morning with peace of mind, knowing that he is learning, cared for, and protected. And if there is ever an emergency, I know in my heart that they would do everything in their power to keep my son safe. This is not a role that can have turnover. It can't afford turnover. What our paraprofessionals truly need and deserve is a livable wage, fair, competitive pay that reflects the essential, skilled, and emotionally demanding work that they do every day with our most vulnerable children."
20 seconds.
"While I'm sure appreciation days and framed presents awarded with a kind gesture are nice, they're not enough. The dedication of these women is the reason Logan can grow and thrive in a classroom setting, so I urge you with all sincerity to support their reasonable requests for a raise. We cannot afford to lose them, not just for Logan's sake, but for every student who depends on someone like them to make school a safe, supported, and inclusion-based place."
Excuse me, that's two minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask out if no one else is ready to speak, that the people that got cut off can regain their time?
I had already thought about that, but let's see.
Thank you.
I can also email them and-
Yeah, please do.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee? Please.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Taylor Smith. I didn't come here planning to talk tonight, and I don't have an email to read, though I am one of the paras that they're talking about in one of those emails. But I do want to say that, you know, the paras are very important. I'm a parent in this town. I have three children that attend Wareham Public Schools, or soon to be three. I work here because I love it here, and it's where my kids are, and I want to be close to them and the people that love them. But also, I'm a highly qualified individual that can go work somewhere else. I'm a veteran. I served in Afghanistan. I don't pull that card a lot, but that's a fact. I was a medic in the service. I was a job coach. I did adult services for many years. I could be working somewhere else, making lots of money, doing something else. I have a college degree. I have training, right? But I'm here because I love my job. I love my community. I love my children, and I love those children. I work in a very difficult, sub-separate classroom. I come home scratched, bit, covered in poop, pee, you name it. If they're having a bad day, I'm in their bad day with them. But every day is a new day, and I still come back and give them a hug and start our day again. So I really want you guys to think long and hard. We're not just, you know, people that could go work at McDonald's. We're here because we want to be here, not because we have no other choice. That's all. And it didn't even take two minutes!
Thank you.
So you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Haley Garrity. I'm wrapping up my fourth school year at the Wareham Elementary School. So I'm not a parent, but I'm 23 years old and still living at home. And in the next couple of years, I want to move out. I want to start a family. I want to buy a house. Right now, I can't because I don't make enough money to do that as a para. So, sorry, I'm skipping around because I don't want to take too much time. So I can't do that right now, so I'm going to make a choice soon. Do I want to stay doing what I love as a para with the kids that I love? Or do I find a new job that's going to pay me something that will make me able to afford to live? It's just not a livable wage. Having humanity and doing it for the kids doesn't pay bills. So I'm faced with a choice that I'm going to have to make. I already said that part, sorry. So ask yourselves, please. Could I do the work of a para while making so little? Could I live with or support a family with a salary of $25,000, give or take? Could I handle the mental, emotional, and physical aspects of being a para while making that salary? If someone that I cared about was a para, would I fight for them to be paid accordingly for the work that they do? If my child or a child that I cared about had a para at any point in their school career, would I want that para to be the most qualified and the most experienced person available? And wouldn't I want that para to be paid accordingly? Have I ever been told that I should do my job for the humanity and not get paid for the work that I do? And if I were a para right now, ask yourselves, would I feel respected by the school committee sitting in front of me? All that to say that I'm 23 years old and four years into the job, and I'm tired. Working with kids is tired. It's tiring. Working with students with ASD is tiring, or any kid. And I know other paras are feeling the burnout, too. It's tough. And going to meetings and having to prove my worth is tiring, so-
Okay, that's two minutes.
I didn't get a 20-second warning?
I didn't, you were in a flow, and I was trying not to interrupt, but-
And let's give her additional 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So if you continue to prioritize other things over paying your most hard-working, hands-on, child-facing, and overachieving staff a livable wage, you will lose them. The teachers will lose them, and the students that need them the most will lose them. So it's just not sustainable anymore to do it for the kids and do it because you love it. So before we lose any more irreplaceable paras, can we please consider all of those things? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
I had, Michelle DeFrancois, first grade teacher at Wareham Elementary. I had two letters sent that I thought were very important to read about the importance of the paraprofessionals. But as I sat there, I just thought of something a little bit different to say. 30-plus years ago, when I started in education, I made what these ladies and gentlemen coming in as paraprofessionals are making now, 30 years ago. I couldn't afford my home 30 years ago with just that pay. And now they're being asked to work the same hours I worked as a teacher for that same amount of money. It seems drastically unfair. I know for a fact that I cannot do my job as a teacher today without the assistance of a paraprofessional in our hallway. And I say "in our hallway" because we are no longer having them in our classrooms as we used to, full-time. We are sharing, one person amongst four classes, to institute small, targeted instruction throughout the day, not to special ed children necessarily, to the general population of this world right now that needs things presented certain ways. And the other 18 might get it, but that one 19th child needs the extra half hour, 45 minutes, an hour, whatever we can spare, with a paraprofessional to get the same quality education that the other children are getting.
20 seconds.
So I hope and I pray that the committee will negotiate in good faith and come up with a solution to the negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marissa. I'm Haley's sister. I work at the school as well as a sub-para, so I'm not affected by the negotiations, but I go to the meetings, and I'm appalled, and it grosses me out. So I have a letter from a parent that I want to read that will also be emailed to you. "Good morning. I wanted to make, take a few minutes and write this email in regards to a few very special individuals. My name is Brendan Fahy, and I'm the proud dad of Evelyn Fahy, a student in Ms. Skolnick's kindergarten class at Wareham Elementary in the special education program. I'm writing this email with a grateful heart and a renewed faith in the pure goodness in people. The progress and joy that Evelyn has had this year has been nothing short of absolutely fabulous. She has been taught to take on responsibilities such as cleaning up after we play, using the potty, which she was not able to do so until about two months ago, and putting dishes away after we eat. Social cues such as other kids' personal space and not doing raspberries in class or a public setting have been understood, and she is exercising her abilities to do so. Her communication has improved, several words have been learned, and she socially knows when it's appropriate to say those words. All of this might sound minor to some, however, as a dad who has seen this kid fight through an open-heart surgery at eight months old, be in a medically induced coma for a month due to a botched tonsillectomy, and have several life-changing, have several life changes be forced on her, I'm humbled by her progress. Evelyn has always been a fighter and has a natural work ethic. However, the accomplishments I mentioned earlier wouldn't have been possible if not for Mrs. Skolnick, Mrs. Aikenberry, and her entire crew's heart, dedication, and determination for the kid's success. These teachers truly love what they do and love those kids. The communication via email and the Remind app has been daily. They have had that class, they have made that class of family, and is in constant support of each other, and that support never wavers. They are every parent's dream. So thank you for the opportunity to sing Ms. Skolnick and her crew's praises. Very respectfully, Brendan and Fahy, Evelyn Fahy's father." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Is there anybody who didn't speak who would like to give their two minutes to people who were cut off? Please come back.
I will share the letter with you.
Okay.
And I'll just point out her ending comments, or read her ending comments, please. "I am a mom of a child with extensive needs. I'm a mom of a child in substantially separate educational classroom filled with an amazing team of teachers and paraprofessionals. Without them, he cannot attend school. She's also a finance professional. She gets it. Budget constraints are real and decisions are needed. She 100% thinks that paraprofessionals receiving a fair, livable wage is worth it. Take all of her stories, which is their reality, not merely just a story, out of the picture, and just talk about these amazing professionals, their employee, not employee numbers on a spreadsheet. We have options to either invest in them with fair wages or not. I believe if you don't, then it would be absolutely devastating to not only their families, but the families of the students who rely on their support. The public school system, who will be faced with more families advocating and fighting for out-of-district placement when their students' needs are not being met, which is costly for the school system. And the community as a whole, who will lose professionals to other communities. There's a real cost risk to consider if you don't invest in paraprofessionals: recruitment expenses, hiring and training new professionals due to turnover, out-of-district costs, decreased productivity costs, lost opportunity costs, et cetera. To her, all of that is secondary because our paras are more than an aggregated number on a budget. There is so much more to our students. They're educators, safekeepers, toileting experts. They are don't-eat-the-plant experts. They are multifaceted communicators. They're consistency friends. Most importantly, in her opinion, they're an absolutely imperative and fundamental part of the school community. They deserve a fair, livable wage. We need to keep strong, consistent, reliable professional people in our school buildings."
20 seconds.
"They deserve it. Our students deserve it. Sincerely, the mom of a happy, flappy adventurer who loves his paras dearly." Thank you. And thank you for giving me your time.
Fine.
So the child that I was speaking of is now in third grade. He is with Michelle Houghton's class. Ms. Smith, who's sat here, is somebody he calls Ms. Smith. And anytime that we use a phrase that she says in school, he by mistake calls us Ms. Smith, because he loves her. He has come so far in her class. Carter has finished in third grade his second-grade ST Math journey, which is incredible for a child like him, who spoke one word when he came to school. At the last meeting that I was at, and the district was there, there was a very eloquent explanation of why paras can't get more money, because it will take from other people. What I'm suggesting is that we just make it more equitable. I don't care where it comes from, but I know it's a possibility to do if they take a good, hard look. Carter will need to be placed somewhere else at some point because the repercussions of the financial dilemma will be detrimental to his progress and growth. And that's unfortunate, because it's a financial choice. It's not a choice that should be done. I have worked beside some of you here, and I know that you're a fair person who loves the children in this town. I have to make an assumption that the only reason that you would not make the choice, the right choice, is that you really don't have all of the information necessary. I'm asking that you come to Wareham Elementary School, where we have more than half of the 500 IEPs, each of which is attached to one child. They are attached to one child, absolutely. The children should be your only consideration in keeping the people who care for their needs and their safety and education able to stay with them. And there's no disrespect intended. I have great respect for all of you, but if they are not your first concern, then what are you doing here? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who didn't speak who would like to give time to somebody else? I think the person in the back was offering two minutes, correct? Is there anybody who didn't get to finish their thoughts who would like to come up?
I just think it's, it's so important that you guys just really listen to what everybody's saying, because they're all just here as parents and people who love the kids in this district more than anybody in the world. And nobody wants to say the hard things, but I'll say it. If anything horrible and tragic ever happens in this district, it's not going to be a custodian or a lunch lady or anybody on the school committee. It's going to be me. It's going to be them and the teachers in their classrooms that save the lives of these kids. Why are we not seen as those people? Because we see it happen on the news everywhere else, and we praise those people, God bless them. They have sacrificed themselves for these children. We're those people. But we're going to have $25,000. Who's going to bury me? That's an important thing for you to consider. We are the first in line. We're going to be the first responders. I make no money. I, like I've said a thousand times, I don't care about my race. I care about these kids. But the people who are literally willing to die for them shouldn't have to work four jobs, shouldn't have to be away from their own kids, spending more time begging you to be fair. I've been here for nearly five years. My wallet doesn't look any different, but I'm still going to come here every day because I have children.
20 seconds.
Everyone in that building, and I know all of you know it, because you would, too, will die for those kids. You need to remember that. Just remember that. It's us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for being here. Okay, summer programming. We're starting with, yes.
Let me wait a second.
Yes. You can give it to me. Thank you. I think we're good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we're here to talk about our summer programming. I'm going to start because Jane has a lot more than I do. So just going to do my little spiel for special education. So our Extended School Year Program 2025- So, our Extended School Year Program 2025. We have two locations this year. We have Wareham Elementary School, which is going to house grades pre-K through seven. And we have Wareham High School, which will do the eight to 12-plus. So, it's our kiddos who stay until they're 22 will also be at the high school. The program will run from July 7th to August 7th this week. We're only doing a five-week program this week. Traditionally, we've done a six-week program, but we've been watching the trends on attendance and decided that it was really not attended well enough to sustain. So, we're going to stick to a five-week program for all students this year. Our program runs Monday through Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and we have a lot of staff. And it's going to sound odd in comparison to the amount of students, but you have to remember that the students that come to us in the summer who are experiencing regression or might experience regression have very high needs. Many have one-to-ones, and they all have different therapies and related services that are associated with them. And so, I ask you to keep that in mind. So, we have 10 teachers right now, 20 paras, one coordinator, a school nurse. It's actually two nurses, but it's one physician. So, there, I have to have a halftime at the elementary school, halftime at the high school. A secretary, and 12 related service providers in the following areas: speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, BCBAs, which are board-certified behavior analysts, a job coach, and CNAs. Currently, we have 83 students enrolled. Our anticipated enrollment that we have typically every year at an average is about 125, but we typically have a lot of late registrations. So, between about June 15th to right up to the day before we start, we'll probably get about 30 students that will register late. So, that's what we're looking at for this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
First, I just want to say thank you for sending over the outline. I know I said something last time, so I appreciate that. Is the whole day academic for them?
So, we do have academic. It's tough because it's all individualized per student. So, some students have specialized reading programs. Some students have a lot of therapies during the day that we're required to provide. So, it is all academically based, but we do have different students being pulled out for different things.
So, it is able to be targeted to what their needs are?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? So, you did comment at the beginning that there's a lot of staff.
Yeah.
And I did some quick math in my head when I first read it. It's essentially, you know, one staff member for every three kids. That's remarkable. And the bottom line is you just can't provide the services that are needed without that.
Correct. And I came in under budget. You'd be proud.
Despite what some people might think, we're up here carrying deeply and wish we had more money.
Yeah.
So, how about the comparing this coming year to last year?
I'd say we're about the same. It's a little difficult this year because we have a couple of students that require one-to-one, and so that increases the amount of paraprofessionals that we need. We did kind of have a regroup meeting today to kind of look at our numbers and our staff to see if there was any areas that we might be able to decrease in. The, I think the intensity of the needs of our students who are coming to our program this year is different than it has been in the past years. So, we really need...
More intense.
More intense. We have a lot of students that are transferring from the middle school to the high school this year and did also last year do that. And so, the level of support that's needed within just that one classroom is requiring six staff. So, you have to think about six staff for six kids is a lot, but that's what we require in order to keep them safe and make sure their, all of their needs are being met throughout that three hours that they're with us. And that doesn't even count all the related service providers that I have to bring in to support their needs through their IEP in the summer. So, I completely recognize the fact that it looks...
I understand.
Yeah.
I guess what surprises me is the, the percentage of kids with IEPs is growing.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, the amount that you're taking care of in this program is essentially the same, is what you're telling me. So, does that mean that some, some, an increasing percentage of kids with IEPs just don't need these services?
I think what's happening is the needs are shifting. So, we used to have a greater span of profile or demographic of student that was coming to us in the summer. And now, we're really having a more intensified need in smaller groups that allows us to kind of regroup and stay within that same amount of, of funding.
Ah, you just said something significant. So, you're saying you'd be serving more kids if you had more funding?
If we had more funding, but...
You would?
I mean, we're serving everybody that we need to serve. I mean, there, there aren't, yeah, there is no, we would never turn away a student.
What did you mean by if you had more funding?
We have more intensive needs this year. Not necessarily, it's not, has, has nothing to do with funding, but the funding is staying the same because we're only concentrating on these intensive needs that we have. So, our programs are growing in the sub-separate area, which is requiring more staff for them. But the other students that were kind of the, the learning disability population that used to come, ESY, has decreased, and the increase is in those sub-separate programs. So, the amount of staff needed to support that, even though the other numbers might be going down, is concentrated in that area. And so, that's why we have to kind of shift around. I apologize. I'm getting a cold, so...
So, you're saying the mix has changed?
The mix has changed. The demographic has changed.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm. Less kids, more needs in a concentrated area.
Wow. April.
Do you find that, that population of more of the white... Oh, sorry. Do you find that more of the population of that, what would have been like, sort of like the outliers or the cusp, ESY students are now kind of shifting into Jane's program as opposed to staying in yours? So, they're still in programming, just not in your specific program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jane, you're up.
Okay, so, we had put together a packet because Bethany's not here. I think you all have shared the breakdown of all the different programs. So, at the Wareham Elementary School, it's going to be a very busy building this summer. Always is, but, so at the elementary...
It's air-conditioned.
Yeah.
Climate-controlled, we like to call it.
Yeah, the cafeteria is the best. But, so, the care program is grades K to seven. We are five-week, too. It's going to be July 7th to August 7th. We provide 120 hours of hands-on, project-based learning, Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 2:30. Currently, we have 135 students enrolled. You see the breakdown for going into kindergarten, first grade, second grade. An additional anticipated students, we have to leave space open because for the accelerated summer academy for middle school, we expect 25 to 30 of those students to stay the full day. They'll do the academy from 8:30 to 11:30, stay for lunch, and then roll into care, specifically because they need the transportation. And the same with boost, which I'll get to that a little later with the cohorts. But the boost students, we have to leave openings because boost this summer, there's going to be a morning cohort and an afternoon cohort. So, the morning cohort, if they want their child to stay the whole day, again, comes to care in the afternoon or vice versa. If they want the afternoon, they'll do care in the morning. So, right now, we have approximately 40 boost students for the morning and 37 students in the afternoon. And for the accelerated academy, right now, she has like 20 students for five, six, and seven, but it's a rolling registration because they're still figuring out what students who are really at high risk and are being recommended for the program. So, the boost, we have structured it differently this year.
Sorry, I'm to interrupt, but define high risk for us.
Well, high risk is based on their testing scores. So, if they're, you know...
Got it. Thank you.
The boost program is K to four. So, it's being structured, where we've expanded it from four to eight groups. So, there'll be two groups for each grade level. So, a kindergarten student going into grade one, there'll be two groups. First, going into second, two groups. Second, going into third, two groups. And three, going into four, two groups. So, they're going to do a morning and an afternoon. This way, each cohort will get 50 hours per cohort of the boost curriculum. The max capacity with that breakdown, because you want to keep the class sizes no more than 15, is 240 students. Currently, the registrations, we have 20 in the K to one cohort, 39 first to second, 20 second to third, and three to fourth, we have 14. Bethany still has registrations ongoing. Again, it's a situation where we have to figure out. A lot of parents just want them to do the boost. They don't need them to stay all day. So, they can keep registering because my spaces will have filled up. So, kids can still register for a boost, but it would be a parent pickup and drop-off. And then, for the first time, we're having a preschool summer program. It's being funded by the CPPI grant. They're going to do July 7th to August 7th, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 2:30, for three, four, and five-year-olds. Excuse me. Currently, they have 10 students enrolled. So, that's, and then we have the sale program over at the high school, which that registration is ongoing right now.
Now, sale is all year round, though, yes?
Well, care is too. There are two 16-week after-school sessions, and then the summer program.
Any questions? Yes, Joyce?
The preschool program, what is the capacity there?
How many students?
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Oh, okay. So, I guess I'm, I'm just disappointed about the enrollment. So, we increased the spots available in the boost program, right?
Wow.
Correct, yeah. So, so, we have the capacity for 240 stu...
Two forty.
Two forty students.
Sounds like we have less than 100.
We have, we have about 100 now.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's, Bethany continues to speak with students, speak, with families that, that, you know, that they're expected to attend. And we, we reached out to families again, and we had an uptick of enrollment. I think that, as, just like Melissa said, as we get closer and parents realize that summer is right here, we're going to see another uptick. So, we are pushing as hard as we can to get as many kids in as possible.
I did not mean that as a criticism of Bethany or Bethany or anyone. I did not mean it like that. I, I just think it's unfortunate that we created more space because more students need it, but we're not seeing. So, hopefully, you'll write, and as summer gets closer.
Right. And it's, it's going to be a great program, a great opportunity for, for our students. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? So, Joyce stole my question, but I was happy to have her do so. I seem to remember something on the order of 30 kids are being retained.
Yes, yes, sir. I don't know the exact number. Those meetings are ongoing as far as, you know, if, if a, if a child is on, is being considered.
But that 240 was not a magic number. That was based on, now I'm blanking on it, the...
The NUIA scores.
NUIA, thank you. Blanking, based on NUIA results.
Correct.
And so, if you take the 30-some-odd and you take the NUIA, the people who did not perform well on the NUIA, you, you've got this gap, you know, in terms of kids who are doing neither. And that's very disturbing if we're, if we're going to get improved results. Now, candidly, I'm not sure about the improved results on MCAS. That's a whole nother issue. I'm more interested in improved results on, on the NUIA for two reasons. One is we do it three times a year, and we get immediate feedback. So, it, it does seem to me that Joyce is raising a really, a really a key issue. And somehow, we need to communicate to parents that, you know, retention is not something we like to do, and there are all sorts of good reasons for not doing it, but a free summer program is, is critical to their future success. I, like Joyce, I'm not criticizing you or Bethany, but I wonder if there's something else we could be doing that would get that message across, that they're sacrificing their middle school and high school progress and success by not doing it. Anyway, that was more of a speech than a question.
There's one thing, Jeff, too, is that with the care program, a lot of the elementary, the K through four, we target a lot of those high-risk students as well. So, if they're not doing boost for half the morning, they're in care all day long. And it is an academic-focused, hands-on, project-based. And we go by the NUIA scores as well.
And on a K through four count, how many people do you think you're taking care of?
For my K to four right now?
Yeah.
I have... I have 86.
That's a pretty big number. Is there any overlap? Do any kids do care on boost?
Yes.
Yeah.
But in those numbers right there are just my care kids. Those are not including the boost that I'm going to be putting in.
Okay, so, that's good.
I haven't placed, we haven't finished with the boost registration, so I will start scheduling them. So, that K, that going into first grade, I have 21 care kids. Boost, going into first, have 20 kids. So, right there, that's an increase to 40.
That makes me feel a little better.
Good.
So, while I've got the two of you here as a, as a resource, April, I think it was April, who sent us an interesting article.
Sorry.
Yes, noted. One of the concerns about MCAS was that it was disproportionately harming kids with IEPs. Is there data to support that criticism of MCAS? In other words, are we finding that kids are being denied diplomas because of MCAS, and they are disproportionately IEP kids?
Well, we are. We're found disproportionate in that by the Department of Ed, so, yes. So, we're supposed to, at, at the Department of Ed kind of structure is we should have less than 1% of our students on IEPs taking the MCAS alt. So, that's the MCAS that, that's like a portfolio, yeah, you know what that is. So, we have always kind of hovered around 1% to 2%. I think this year, we might actually get underneath that 1% as we try to give our kids more exposure to inclusion and to being able to find a different way to approach the MCAS. But now with this new legislation, it's kind of throwing us off. And how do we now create opportunities for our students with IEPs to have a rigorous curriculum and rigorous standards for graduation for the state, but also make sure that we're not lowering that rigor for anyone so that it's consistent across the board? So, we're on all kinds of committees in the state with all the directors to look at what that's going to look like. We're hoping that Desi comes down with some guidance on how to make that happen. But again, that's something that, you know, we're going to have to wait for. But there are many conversations that we've been having with legal and with other districts and with directors across the state through our organization on what that's going to look like, how we're going to roll that out, and being consistent in what we do so that we're not out in islands doing different things. And so, that we're working really hard towards that goal right now, but it's probably going to take us another six months, I would say.
I always, I always get concerned about incentives. And it sounds like the state has almost said, you know, get it under 1% or you've got a problem. Now, have you changed the criteria or anything to get yourself under 1%? Or is this just success?
Yeah, so, I actually, and the superintendent will tell you, I actually argue a lot with Desi about this because for me, and I think I said this to you all when I, when I presented about our TFM, so like our evaluation that the state does every three years. They want us under certain numbers, but they don't understand our population, and they're not in our schools. So, for me, my pushback is always individualized educational plans are for individuals, and I'm not going to force somebody into a box because you want my number to be under this. So, I think our programming and our constant, you know, research and looking at the trends and looking at what's out there to support our students helps us kind of move out of that. But I'm certainly not going to say I'm just going to, you know, haphazardly move kids because the state tells me I have to. So, that's, I think that's the big pushback that we've done. And it goes over sometimes okay-ish. But yeah, I mean, it's something that we kind of stand very strong on. I'm fortunate that the superintendent kind of supports us in that because we...
I bet he fully supports you.
He totally supports us in that, wholeheartedly. But, you know, we have to kind of hold our ground because our population is very unique. And when I say that, people, oh, no, it's not, no, our population is very unique, and we need to meet the unique needs of our students, whatever that means. And it's not going to be, it should not be, nor will I allow it to be in my tenure here dictated to me by the state because I have to get, I have to take five kids off because that's what they tell me to do, so...
Well, I applaud you for your attitude and keep pushing back. Anybody have anything else now that I've taken extra time? Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. Thanks. Did you have something else, Jane?
Aren't I on the thing for pass?
She's for pass. She's next on the agenda.
Yes, continue. Yes.
Well, not much to say, actually, because the graduation hasn't taken place yet. It's next week on July... It's next week on July 11th, Wednesday evening. I've sent invitations.
You meant June, yeah.
June 11th.
What did I say? May?
You said July.
Oh, well.
It's a J.
We knew what you meant.
June 11th at 5 o'clock over in the middle school auditorium. We have 13 graduating, and...
Seems like a lower number.
Well, as I said before, what's happening is, since COVID, prior to COVID, most of our night school students were juniors and seniors that just, you know, weren't going to be able to finish it and wanted to get done. So, our graduating classes were large because they were only with us for a semester or two. Since COVID and with learning loss and all those kind of things, our big population now are freshmen and sophomores.
Wow.
So, we're seeing the tail end of our older kids, so we should start to see, we're going to see larger graduates. But, so there are 13, and of which, right now, we know there are three that have been accepted, one to UMass, two to Bridgewater State. We had one student who did dual enrollment this semester, so she was taking her courses at night, and she was going to Bridgewater. We have several that are already going into workforce, into construction, so they've all got their plans.
Outstanding.
Yep. So, but you're all invited.
Yes.
I love forward to it.
It's very brief, but it's a special graduation.
I love it. It's a great, great night.
Anybody have any questions, comments, besides? Thank you.
Okay.
You did great work.
Thank you.
No, you can't keep up the great work. You're only, you're leaving us in October.
No, but I'm going to, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. All right. Kristin, you're up.
Thank you. In your packet, you have the financial report for April. Right now, we're just spending a lot of time monitoring the budget, making sure that all of the line items are funded for the end of the year. We're predicting our salaries for the end of the year, and also some of our expenses, and looking, really monitoring that almost, just almost daily, but mostly weekly. So, there's really not a lot of changes. We're 76% spent, spending a lot of time, again, like I said, looking at some of those encumbrances and, you know, trying to predict. There's some salary lines that are a little bit unpredictable, like substitutes, and also expense lines, our special ed contract services. Those are fee-for-services, so we don't always have a good, as good a prediction as we do on some of the other line items. So, we still are watching the home tutoring, the special ed transportation, out-of-district transportation, and it seems every week we get a new out-of-district student sometimes or an out-of-district transportation. So, it really, just when we get things all patched up, we have to put down another patch, but that's the nature of school business at this time of the year. I don't know if you have any specific questions about the budget? I don't have, you know, anything specific that I need to bring to your attention at this time that I haven't.
Questions? It does seem like you're, it's a jigsaw puzzle, isn't a perfect analogy, but trying to make sure that nothing goes negative, and it would be one thing to prevent the whole budget going negative, but you're not, you have to do it in much smaller increments than the whole budget.
Yes, absolutely.
That seems like, candidly, a waste of your time, but I guess it is what it is.
It is, correct me if I'm wrong, it is the policy that dictates this. Am I correct?
Um, it's, I think it's the town policy that no one line item can go into deficit.
Because I don't think it's a school policy.
So, that is, it is, you know, under mass state law, under mass general law, the school committee's budget is one line item. So, as you said, it's, you know, looking at, to make sure the big number at the bottom is not negative. But here, it's a little bit more challenging because we're looking at, just today, you know, I posted the payroll, and an overtime account went into negative, so I did a budget transfer, you know, for that amount, just to, just to make sure that operations continue and we don't have invoices deleted for expenditures or, you know, the payroll held up and things like that. So, it is time-consuming, but the one bright thing about it is it has forced me to really, you know, hone in on all of the line items and learn the budget, you know, much more, much more closely, so.
It tells me you would have done that anyway. And it does strike me, and at the risk of being provocative, but when did that stop me, that it may be an interference in the school district's finances by requiring that when the state does not. Is there, would you, would you like us to...
I think she's pleading the fact.
Would you like us to investigate the extent to which the town's policy is, in fact, inappropriate interference?
At this point, I think it's manageable. I do, but thank you. I do think, I do think it's manageable. You know, I have a good staff that helps me out, and, you know, we all work together, so it is manageable. And like I said, it does, it does help to know, it does help in, you know, really looking at all those line items rather than just looking at what I call the major accounts, you know, when we break it down, so.
All right, then I will do nothing pending your decision to encourage me to do it.
And all towns operate differently, you know, in speaking with other school business managers, some of them are very similar to here in Wareham, and others have, are different. So, it really all depends what the tenor of the town is, and I understand they don't want to have a financial crisis, and this is one way of making sure that that's not going to happen.
I could debate that, but I'm not going to. Committee will be happy to know. All right, let's move on to the revolvers.
So, I also have the yearly revolving fund report, and I'm going to go through this. I have some notes because some of them, as we go through, you'll see where we're spending, you know, monthly, and we're taking in revenue monthly. So, the picture here at the end of April, when I ran this, is not what it's going to be, you know, fully at the end of the year. So, I will, like I have in the past, rerun this and include it at some time after June 30th. So, our revolving funds that we have that have balances are listed. Some of them have no activity this summer school, the first one, that's an old account. It predates my time here, and that's just the balance in that account. School property, the revenues are derived from when we rent our facilities to any outside groups, some of the facility rentals for that, the revenue, and also the expense for that is if we have any custodials, custodians that stay overtime or have to be there to open the building on the weekend. And also, we can use that, those expenditures for some, you know, school facility work that we may not have room for in the budget, and we have done that in the past. Lost Books, that's an old name, but really, that is for damages to Chromebooks, so really it became, years ago, I think it came in when a student would lose a book, and now it's if they lose their Chromebook or damage their Chromebook. There are some fees associated with that, and that gets deposited in there, and we use that for some technology expenses. Transportation is our transportation revolving. A lot of the revenue is from our McKinney-Vento reimbursement that you see, that we've received over the years. I do have a note here that the 79,000 that we recently got appropriated at town meeting was, is not included in that revenue because we hadn't, we hadn't gone to town meeting at that point yet, so you'll see that balance go up. And I will say, too, that anticipated for FY '24, which we're filing now for and will receive shortly, for McKinney-Vento revenue, I filed for 203,000 this year, and that's based on our expenses for out-of-district transportation. So, depending on what the percentage reimbursement is, if it's 80%, like it was, you know, round figures, it was 79 this year, so if it's 80%, we would take in an additional 162,000, and that we use to offset the cost of our McKinney-Vento homeless transportation, and we've planned in the budget to use $100,000 of that amount.
Right now, it's 54%.
Is it? That's...
Unfortunate.
That's not good. But, you know, it is some, it is some help. We also, the revenue we also do for transportation revolving is if we help out another district with their transportation. We're fortunate to have our own fleet of buses, so, and Marie, our transportation director, has a good relationship with a lot of the neighboring transportation directors, and also some of my, you know, fellow business managers in the area. If we have a student that one of us can take, then we will take on that student and charge a small fee to the other town and vice versa. So, we are taking in a small amount of money by picking up some students on some of the routes that we have, and these would be our out-of-district routes. So, for example, if we go to Cape Cod Collaborative, there may be a student in Bourne or in Falmouth that is also going there, that we can pick up and charge that district. So, it works out for both districts because, you know, as you know, these out-of-district routes sometimes are 2, 3, 400 dollars a day, and we're just doing it to cover our costs and kind of help us help both districts. Athletics is any of the fees, the gate receipt. Very little expenses are going through athletics at this point in time, which is good. We've been able to not rely on the athletic revolving fund. A few years ago, we were relying on the athletic revolving fund to fund athletics, and right now, we've kind of stabilized the budget funds for athletics. So, the only, the only fees that you see, expenses that you might see coming through here is, for example, we just had to purchase a, I don't know, a subscription, for lack of a better word, for next year to allow the football coaches to see film, and that's for next year, but we couldn't use our this year's budget for it, so, but they needed it now. So, it's nice that we have this athletic revolving to be able to make that purchase and get those supplies in the hands of those who need it. So, things like that, if there are some things that we need to start to buy now for next school year, so that's helpful. Driver's education is our driver's ed program, so it's the fees that we charge the students, and then the costs are just the instructor salaries and any repairs to cars or anything like that. ROTC, I skipped over asbestos because it only has $33.05 in it, and it hasn't had any activity in years. ROTC is, we have some ROTC instructors that we receive funds from the state for approximately half of their salaries. So, you'll see here, it's in the negative in, as of when I printed this off, and that's because the revenue, we had only received the revenue through March 31st, and we had expenses, salaries of our instructors through the end of April. So, I did look at it again just recently, and the revenue is up to 76,920. So, we hover around a small, a small balance with ROTC because it's really just meant for funds in to pay for the salaries and funds out to pay for the salaries. So, it's really just hovering at less than $1,000. School choice is our school choice fund where we get money for students who are not Wareham residents that come to school here. Our balance in school choice has gone down, I will say, because we are taking in less revenue. A couple of years ago, we were taking in about $40,000 a month, and now we're only taking in about $15,000 a month. So, that is something that is, that I will need to watch because, looking at our expenses, which is our night school program, and some, that's the bulk of it, and some other, some other salaries, that we may need to think about that in the future, that, and make some adjustments to that, given our lower school choice revenue that we're taking in. PASS is just the PASS revolving fund for that Jane spoke of, and that is some fees for the night school, and also it just offsets some of the, some of the supplies for the students and also graduation. Preschool is our fee for preschool, so the revenues are derived from tuitions from families, and right now, we are charging one teacher salary to the preschool grant, and we do rely on that as an offset to the budget. So, you'll see that in the budget as well. Extended Care and Global Ed are both older accounts that don't, haven't had much activity since I've been here. This is the one expenditure for Global Ed is the fee that we have to, a certification fee that we have to pay. And finally, school surplus is if we do, when we turn, when we get rid of stuff, if we sell it or, you know, surplus, if we recycle and get a small amount. A lot of times with the recycling of technology, we might get a credit on a future purchase, or sometimes we'll get a check, and that gets deposited in there. So, you can see that's not, not very much at all. Our major revolving funds really are transportation, athletics, driver's ed, ROTC, and school choice, and preschool for the most part.
Questions? So, how, you noted in, under transportation, that $100,000 was in next year's budget. Is that the only line item from which you are taking any money for next year's budget?
No. So, we do have the preschool, so preschool, we're taking a teacher's salary, which is roughly 100,000, and...
Rather than go through it individually?
Yep.
Of the $847,000, which is obviously a pretty big number, how much is that, how much of that is committed to next year's budget? Round number.
I'm thinking, just looking at it very quickly, probably about 240,000 to 250,000 between transportation, you know, just, like I said, a small amount from athletics. Driver's ed doesn't come into the budget at all, so we don't even consider that when we're formulating the budget.
So, less than a third?
Yeah.
And are there restrictions onto what you can use, the two-thirds that remain?
Yes, so, each revolving fund is voted at town meeting at some point in time, not annually. Some do have to be voted annually, but these don't. So, when it's voted in, and there's also guidance from the Department of Revenue and the Department, and DESI, that says what you can use which revolving funds for. So, for example, preschool, we could not use that to pay for high school athletics. So, things like that. So, some of it is kind of obvious, but you just try to think of it in terms of the purpose of the fund. What is the revenue that's coming in, and what are the expenses coming out for?
It does seem that we're still looking at a 500, 600,000 deficit. I'm not sure what the exact number is at the moment. It does seem like this might be a source because we've got lots of individual accounts to which we could contribute some of this money. Maybe we'll save that for a budget subcommittee meeting, but maybe, maybe Kevin and I will be interested to see how that could help us.
Right, I mean, certainly, it could. And I like to think of revolving funds as kind of our safety net, and so, when, when everything else is gone, you know, the revolving funds can live from year to year, so I've always tried to approach it as, you know, other than the ones that we count on, say the $100,000 from transportation revolving and the preschool teacher salary, I kind of try to count on that as like the last, my last hope for, you know, for, to be able to pay for something. Or sometimes, like with school choice or even transportation revolving, we'll get an invoice in August after we've had to close out the fiscal year, for the prior fiscal year. And so, rather than waiting till the next town meeting and hoping for a two-thirds vote at town meeting, you can just run it through a revolving fund and get that vendor paid and get that service, you know, and stay in good standing. So, some of that, and some of that is what's helpful, school choice is helpful for, because there are always, it seems like, there's always some special education bills that come after, especially some of the contracted service providers, certainly some of the transportation parts, because, you know, with, with transportation, they're fixing the buses in June 29th, so they might go into the store and get parts. We don't know about it until August, and now what? So, that's helpful, so. But you are correct that there are, you know, there probably are some areas that we could look at beyond what we're already offsetting.
Just, Kevin?
Just regarding school choice, and I know the trend, students coming in is a lot different than those going out right now. We get about, what, $5,000 for each student that enters the district, correct?
Right, right.
So, what is the impact of a student that leaves the district monetarily on us in the overall budget, would you get roughly?
So, the school choice sending tuition is in the, is in the town's budget, so that doesn't, we don't, I don't see that.
Right.
So, I don't see that, so I don't, I'm not really as well... So, I don't see that, so I don't, I'm not really, um, as well-versed about that. So, that part, I'm, I'm not sure of. Um, but in, back in, in terms of, of the receiving tuition, some of, and we do sometimes get more than five thousand if there is a special education student that has, that has services. And likewise, when we do file, um, when, when Melissa files a school choice special ed increment form every year, um, that is dependent on the services. So, the town, we will get, you know, charged for more expensive services.
I think both sending and receiving are on the cherry sheets. And I think, uh, the good news is, I think we're immune to that with respect to our budget.
Right, right.
So, your, your question is, is obviously important, but the good news is the town historically has said the cherry sheets, with the exception, obviously, of chapter seventy, um, the cherry sheets are what they are.
Right. We, we keep the funds, the incoming funds in our, our revolving fund, but we're not paying out for the revolving fund.
Right. But we're just not getting the little check of seventy-one that's impacted, right?
Right, because our, like I said, when, um, when I first started here several years ago, this school choice revenue was about forty thousand dollars a month. Um, and I don't know if, if some of that was students, special education students that maybe have graduated or, or left, that, that bumped it up because really at five thousand dollars a student, you need an awful lot of students to get up to that revenue. Um, so, and I, I do believe that some of Jane's night school students at our school choice also help out with that revenue as well.
Now, the big line item is not here because it's not a revolver, it's a circuit breaker.
Mm-hmm, I, yes. And I, but I did include it, and I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because I almost forgot. It's on the next page. Um, I did include it, and you're right, it's not a revolving fund, but it is a lot of money. So, I do like to include it. Um, so this year, actually, we, um, the, the balance that we ended last year was, was one point three million, and that you can carry over the circuit breaker funds up to one year. So, the good practice is to try to do that as best as possible and then use that against your budget for the next year. And that's what we've worked ourselves up to, and we're able to, we're doing that now as we're carrying over one full year, and we can predict it and offset the budget with that. So, we closed the year and opened the year with one point three million in circuit breaker. But we have to spend that this year. And right now, we, um, anticipated expenses for, that we're charging to circuit breaker. We have some, uh, special ed tuitions, that's the bulk of it, about one million thirty thousand. We are charging three positions to circuit breaker, a job coach, a BCBA, and a social worker. And we also had some contracted service providers earlier in the year, Effective School Solutions, that we were using circuit breaker for. So, right now, um, we're anticipating to spend by June thirtieth, one million two hundred and ninety-three thousand. But like I said, by law, we can, we have to spend what we carried into the year is one point three million. So, we still have some, some unspent funds that, um, we are going to use to, hope to, um, help us in FY twenty-six for, for next year. Um, so, this year, our revenue that we're taking in is one point, one million six hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's the actual, what you have on your sheet is what, what we had already received by, by April, uh, May fifth, when I printed this out. So, the revenue is dispersed quarterly by DESI. Um, and I did notice when I looked at it today that our revenue, uh, increased by twenty-nine thousand. So, so that's, that's helpful. Um, so, and we can use that for any special education expense. And it's really, it's meant to, um, just to bridge the gap to help with some of your more unpredictable and expensive, um, expenses. And that's why the law allows you to carry forward. So, you do have, it is based on the students that you've already expended funds for. Uh, the special ed directors file the claim. They do a really good job here in Wareham if I, in identifying all, every service to get us the maximum amount of money. Um, recently, transportation has entered into circuit breaker, so that's really bumped up our claim. And, uh, so right now, what we're doing is we're carrying over one full year and then able to predict it against the budget and use it, um, to help offset the budget. A few years ago, I think our circuit breaker balance was about three hundred thousand or so when I got here. So, we've been able to, to manage it and take in more funds and manage the funds to get us up to what, um, DESI and DOR, you know, wants you to do with that and, and carry that over, so.
Just to be clear, because I think I was under a different impression. The school choice that goes out, we, we, has no impact on our budget?
No, correct.
And the, but the school choice dollars for, for kids that come in does impact our budget?
Yes, well, it comes into our revolving fund.
Comes into our revolving.
And then we can use that for, to help our budget or for...
They don't net the two numbers. They literally, literally just get the money, which is, with the exception of the night school, is pretty small, obviously. But, okay, fine, budget transfers.
So, budget transfers. So, this is the, um, budget transfer. I did my best to predict where we're gonna land year end, um, for our salaries and our expenditures. So, I have the budget transfer. And really, um, I put in my, my email to you all, the majority of the budget transfer, and it's, it's in the accounts that we've been mostly talking about all year that we're watching. Um, the majority right now is in collaborative and private tuitions. We have, um, recently, uh, had some students enroll or become responsible from, for some students that are in some, uh, very expensive placements. So, we had a student just start in a residential and, for the month of June. So, that was unexpected, so we needed to add funds to private tuition. And also, these funds in private and collaborative tuition, I'm adding some to it, to prepay special ed tuitions for next year. And again, that is, that is allowed under master general law to prepay tuitions for collaborative. You can prepay up to one year, um, and private up to the first three months of the year. And that's something that will, that we've planned for in our FY twenty-six budget and is helping us close that, that budget deficit as well. And so, we also have, um, a transfer for transportation contract services for homeless transportation and also for special ed transportation. And so, we have a few more students that have, um, you know, homeless students that we've had enter since the last time we did a transfer. So, we just need to make, I wanna make sure that we don't have a deficit. And as this is our last, uh, school committee meeting, I wanted to try to give myself a little cushion just in case anything else arises. Um, just today, we had a student, a new transportation requirement. So, things, things in, in transportation and tuition are changing, um, almost every day. Another, um, what we're looking for is the, just a small amount in some of the salaries just to, um, to make sure that we have enough in all of those lines. Teach, high school teacher salaries, athletics, which is our coaches, and, um, some other game workers that are on the payroll. Uh, also a transfer for student services, home tutoring, both regular day tutoring and special education tutoring. Again, we still have invoices for the month of May and also June outstanding, and those, you know, we, we know when we're sending students out, but we just don't know, I don't know now as if we'll be sending more students out for tutoring it for the rest of the school year. I, I know it's a short amount of time, but, um, it is an area that we're, that is, uh, again, unpredictable and costly. So, I just wanna make sure that we have enough in those line items. Um, the rest, again, like I said, is just some, some salary cleanups. And you'll see that the funds that we're, I'm using to transfer out of are a lot of expenditure accounts that weren't fully expended. Um, so, there's just some small amounts in a lot of the lines that we have that just, just, like I said, were not fully expended. Some of the larger ones were some of the middle school, uh, equipment contract services and maintenance of building contract services. Uh, we did have some light replacement projects that have been gone, ongoing for a few years, and we did get some good pricing on that. And we were also, at the end of last year, able to knock off some of this year's, um, what we had planned for this year. So, we were able to, you know, save some funds this year in doing that. So, that's where some of those funds are coming from. Um, and also, like I, some of the transportation salaries, we're transferring out a lot of time. I think we had hoped to have more in-house transportation, but it's really hard to hire drivers of, as we've talked about. So, instead of, uh, hi- paying for drivers ourselves, some of these, we had to contract out. So, that's what you'll see, the shift from driver salaries to the contracted services. So, that's just an overview of the transfers, and I'm hoping that, um, this will, this will be it for, for the year.
Questions?
Yeah, yes, um, for one, but back to the revolving thing. Um, so, you know, some of those categories weren't being utilized, whatever. You know, there were no transfers in or out.
In...
And so, I was just wondering what, uh, like, is there interest being made on any of this money that's just sitting there in the account or?
Um, it's, it's by statute whether the revolving fund gets to keep the interest. And in these revolving funds, they do not. It goes to the town because all of our funds are held by the town. So, the town treasurer will invest the, the money presumably. And a lot of the interest is, is, is what they call the town, the town general fund money. There is one, um, account that by statute keeps its interest, and that's a school lunch account. And that's, you know, I didn't include that here, um, but that is one that by statute, so every month, we get interest on our school lunch, uh, balance, uh, our school lunch funds.
But that's not part of our budget.
No, yep, school lunches is separate from the budget. It's totally self-funded.
Another question I had was about the codes on, um, this was like from earlier when you were talking. I didn't wanna interrupt you, but, um, how, how do, where do you find a key for all the codes? For, for the pay, you know?
Yeah, so, this is, this is one of Jeff's favorite questions, too. Um, a lot of, when you see the, on, on the budget transfer sheet, this big number is, is, is the account number. And the Department of Ed specifies what they call the chart of accounts. So, that's how we report our revenues and expenditures to the Department of Ed. And it's based on function codes. So, for example, in all towns, we'll have it slightly different. But when you look at our big string of numbers, when you see the four-digit kind of in the middle, that's the, that's the major function code. So, on this, the top one, nine four zero zero, that's the Department of Ed's code to say that's a collaborative tuition. If you see a two three zero five, that's a teacher's salary. And I can certainly provide you with like the grid of that and some more information. So, the rest of the, the codes will tell you, will tell us. The zero zero one, that means it's the school department general fund budget. Twelve is the cost center, so that's the district. It's a district-wide expense. It might be, um, a middle school expense, which would be thirteen. A high school expense would be fifteen. And so, each cost center within our budget has a code because, again, we have to report, it's for the purpose of reporting out to, um, DESI mainly, but it also makes it easier for, um, us as business officials to, to kind of summarize that information and, and, and report out to it to everyone. And there's also, um, it also, there's a, a number in there that'll say whether it's a special education expense or a regular, we call a regular day expense. And there's also a number in there that says what is, it's the object code. So, it would be a professional salary, like a teacher, a clerical salary, um, a paraprofessional or custodian salary, a contract service, a supply or other, which could be travel reimbursement, something like subscriptions. So, all those numbers have, have a meaning, and it helps us, you know, if you were to say, uh, Kristen, can you tell me how much you've spent on collaborative tuition? I could run a report very easily based on that function code and send it to you. And likewise, that's the report that we do every year for DESI. So, that's what the codes are. And then, within that, and maybe on the revolving fund report, I may have, um, had the town code, the town fund code, and that's a whole other, that's a whole other code. So, the town will establish fund codes for all of the funds. And then also, the grants also have their own code. So, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of numbers, and, um, you know, every, every town and school is different. And when I first came here, it, even for someone who had been looking at this for quite some time, it was a little bit overwhelming to have, to see all those numbers in a different way, so. Um, but I can certainly, I can certainly try to give you a summary of, of, of what some of these things mean. It's, Department of Ed has a nice chart of accounts, um, cheat sheet that I still refer to, so.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. I'll take a motion to approve the budget transfers. I have a motion.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Report of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you do, you have a copy of the superintendent's report in your packet. I think I'll start with, if we could please approve the pill, the bill and payroll warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you. Uh, way back on April tenth, uh, we did, um, begin negotiations and finish negotiations with our cafeteria workers. Thank you to April, who, uh, sat in those negotiations and assisted with, with that. Uh, we came to, um, it was a very positive experience. Uh, we came to a, a, a great agreement, a very fair agreement, uh, for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight. You've had an opportunity to, to review that. Um, and I ask that you approve the warrant, the MOA, so we can update the contract.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you. Um, last meeting, we had presented to you, um, the updated hourly rates. And I don't think you voted. Um, I think, Joyce, you had a question about, um, you wanted to make sure that the substitute, uh, rate for a custodian, I'm sorry, for a cafeteria didn't exceed what, um, any of them were...
Lowest paid, yes. So, now that we've approved...
Right, I just would ask that you approve that document. Nothing else changed since our last presentation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, concerns, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you very much. And you have also in your packet a list of obsolete, um, it says furniture, but it's really obsolete equipment. Um, and, so there's a number of things on there. Um, you know, snow blower, gas grill, boiler parts, uh, field laser, field striper, uh, Husqvarna push mower. Uh, all of those are just, they're, um, they're beyond their useful life. They've actually used them for parts, and at this point, they don't work at all. There's no one that they could be, um, donated to or given to. They really need to be disposed of. Uh, the Wareham High School has a number of plates and bowls and saucers and, um, such that you can see that list. I did have a question of what a monkey dish was. It's a small, shallow, wide dish, if you didn't know that.
You've never worked in a restaurant?
Thank you.
Did you guys all know?
I had no idea. I thought it was for monkey bread, to be honest. I was like, I made monkey bread and culinary in high school? That must be what it's for.
Uh, so, but, we are looking for, the high school is looking for, um, places in which we'll take, take those, um, those items. Uh, maybe Damien's pantry.
I always have a question when it's obsolete stuff.
So, yes.
Same one I always ask.
Uh, and then finally, there was a list... And then finally, there was a list of tech obsolete equipment. All of these, I checked with our IT department. They do a fantastic job, and you remember a presentation from last year by Bonny La Source about how they really strip these items and reuse the parts. So all of these things are just really skeletons of what's left, and they just will be disposed of. So I ask that you approve for this obsolete list, and we can take the appropriate steps with these items.
So I always have the same question with obsolete furniture. Anything that does get purchased, I would just like a report back of what we were able to get back, even if it's like for, like, metal, recite, you know, like, that kind of thing. I like to know if we are donating it or it was scrapped, what we are able to recoup for that. That's the only thing I ask, other than that motion to approve.
So noted. Yes, Kevin?
I was going to make a move to accept.
Fine.
It's obsolete.
Yes. Do I have a second? Yes, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, 500.
Thank you very much, and that is all I have.
So the only thing we have left, other than any other new business, would be the school committee, subcommittees. The only thing I would note on this...
I didn't get it.
It was in the packet.
It was not on my packet.
I didn't see it either.
You didn't see it?
I'm so sorry.
Didn't.
I have one, and I can pass it down.
I'm like, I did not get it. I was looking.
I have a copy.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Don't worry about it, Jamie.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can find my...
Do you have it, Roger? Is it saying memo on it?
No.
It looks like this. I thought I saw that earlier. Okay, well, then I will quickly go through it. If you were on the policy review, April, you remain as chair.
Yay!
And Roger will be joining you. It's a really good way to, you know, get used to what goes on in a school committee.
Yep, and I keep them very quick and to the point. I rein that meeting right in.
So, does it have a date on it?
Not yet. We won't have dates. We'll set, we typically start those in October. And it's a Zoom meeting.
And if I remember correctly, you have to look at every policy at least once every...
Every three years.
Three years?
Yeah, unless there is a new policy or something comes down from the state, and we just, we review them every three years to make sure that they're still relevant and...
I thought it was five, too. I was just...
Is it five?
It's five, except for discriminatory harassment.
Oh, it was three, too.
I thought it was three. My bad. That's why I have Jamie. Jamie is also the only reason I can function in that capacity.
The superintendent, excuse me, the budget subcommittee, I did everybody a favor and left Kevin and myself on that committee. The superintendent evaluation committee, you're lucky you get to work with Joyce on that, Roger. It's an important committee, and that document is an interesting committee.
What is, what is this?
Superintendent evaluation, okay? Because we're in a search, the evaluation of the superintendent is, shall we say, a little less important next year because it's his last year. But it's always a good, it's always a good process to learn something about. The Cape Cod Collaborative, Roger, I asked you to take that, as I indicated at the last meeting. The onset scholarship, Kevin and Joyce. I am retaining the Park Scholarship. It's been an interesting process, looking at the changes as a result of the volatility of the stock market, but I'll leave that report for another day. The superintendent search committee will be chaired by Kevin and supported by Joyce, and you will be getting back to us with dates, because the dates on the bottom of the calendar, I guess, were all tentative.
Right.
But you don't need to speak about that tonight. The cafeteria will be Roger and April. Bus drivers, Kevin and Joyce. Custodians, April and Kevin. And then we've got the units A, B, C, and D. They remain the same, with the exception of Roger. He'll be joining the unit D negotiating committee, which just concluded, yes, so you've got a break.
Correct, they're in the first year of their contract.
You've got a break before you have to start that process. This was based on feedback that I got from all of you, which I asked for, and I hope people are comfortable. It does not require a vote, but I still want everybody to be comfortable with their assignments. All good?
Yep.
All good.
Thank you.
I'll email it to all of you tomorrow morning, the hard copy. If you could just hand it to Roger, because he's the most unfamiliar with it. No, it'd be great.
Yeah, I took a picture.
I did, too.
I have a...
I took a picture.
Oh, you took a pic?
Oh, good.
I taught him how to take a photo of it. He was like writing it out, and I was like...
April and Joyce, you got a copy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The only other thing I would bring up under other business is, Matt and Jamie and I met briefly to talk about the meeting agenda and the standard things that come up on the agenda. And I thought I would share with you an idea that I had. I suspect the principals will have perhaps some, but probably no problem. I would like to have a three times a year report on the NUIA results. Because I, for one, and I may have told you guys, that when I asked, when people were complaining about MCAS, and we got into, on the tennis team, when we started talking about it, I said, well, don't you think there ought to be some kind of standardized testing associated with, to make sure you guys are really learning what you need to learn? And one of them immediately piped up, and everybody agreed with her, use NUIA. So it's apparently not perceived in the same way as MCAS, and I can assure you that Mr. Palladino, at least, would probably be very appreciative of that being used in lieu of people taking MCAS less and less seriously, which may very well make the results that we get less and less significant. So I would like to start the process of considering that, along with the state doing their thing, which we know they are, for us to start considering, and I emphasize considering, I'm not proposing it, NUIA as a part of graduation requirements in some fashion, because we're already doing it, and it's a very productive and useful tool for the teachers as well as the principals and therefore for us. So unless anybody has any objection, I'm going to propose that.
Should we make a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. Don't need a motion. I'm just, this is called transparency. That's something that I'm going to recommend, and if anybody has any feedback tonight or sometime in the near future, I always appreciate feedback.
And this is our last formal meeting until?
August.
August? Okay.
Yes, exactly.
I would say that we have, in the past, received that information, and then it kind of dropped off.
Exactly.
So we used to see the fall, the mid-year, and then the spring, so we could see the patterns, and we could...
It disappeared.
We could see the patterns from spring.
Other agenda things took precedence for quite some time.
Well, I don't, I mean, I think there's not much that's more important than this.
No, I don't disagree, but I think they got the depth heavy.
You know, it was so, always so interesting to see, from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year, but also from the end of the school year to the beginning, you know.
Yes, learning loss is not significant.
Unfortunately, sometimes it dropped over the summer. So yes, so I think that's a great idea.
All in favor?
Yep.
Yes? Okay, we can talk about it.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will take a motion to adjourn, unless anybody has anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Noah.
Have a good summer. Well, we'll see you at graduation.